The hearing tonight, Sims Township Zoning Commission meeting, February 16th, 2022, and it's approximately 7:02. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic in which stands one nation, an underground indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ken, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Etter?
Here.
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Kessler?
Here.
Mr. Reichman? Ms. Fields?
Here.
Ms. Coughlin?
Here.
Anyone like to motion to approve the agenda?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Coughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Etter?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting for January 19, 2022?
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes for January 19, 2022.
Second.
Upstain.
Roll call.
Mr. Etter?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Coughlin?
Upstain.
So let's open up the public hearings. We'll start with first case, Sims number 2022-01, Snyder Road, multifamily zone change. May we hear from staff, please?
Yes, good evening. Brian Snyder, Hamilton County Planning and Development. I'm here to present the Regional Planning Commission Staff Report, which you should have a copy of. This case is a zone change request from a single-family residence to OO planned office, sorry, planned residence with subservient office. The property is located on Snyder Road, just north of I-71 and just south of Five Seasons Club. The zone changes in the state of Ohio are required to go through a specific process. In Sims Township, that starts with a public staff review conference. There have been a number of those on this site, but there have been no zone changes since, I believe, since the 90s that have been proposed for this property. It's been for sale for a number of years. We've seen a number of proposals, but this is the first one since I've been working with Sims Township to come through the zone change process. The staff review conference was held in September of 2021. There were several participants in attendance at that meeting, and there were a number of issues that were raised, including traffic, lighting, watershed issues, outdoor activity, building height, and then the possibility of, there was a discussion about a shared driveway with Five Seasons. Since that time, the applicant did put together an actual submission package for a zone change request. We did get that, and we did schedule the required public meetings. The staff report is prepared for the first meeting for the Regional Planning Commission, which was supposed to be held on February 3rd. It was moved to February 10th because of the ice storm. But the staff report that was presented to the Planning Commission is what you have, and I'm going to go through that briefly, and then I'll just kind of go over the rest of the zone change process. The first part of the staff report that we do is describe the use. So in this case, what the applicant's proposing is a three-story, 30,000-square-foot apartment building. It would contain a total of 80 units. At one point, that was discussed that there would be 100 units. There was a plan for 120 units. Most recent revised plan that we received as part of this was for 80 units. So that is what is before you tonight, is a plan for 80-unit apartment building. It also shows a deck pool patio area, parking spaces along I-71, 151 spaces are proposed, underground detention, and the ISR would be 69%. So it'd be covering 69% of the property. Staff reviewed the proposal for consistency with the Sims Township Comprehensive Land Use Plan, adopted by both the Sims Township trustees and the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission. The designation for this property on that plan is attached single-family, which is defined as moderate-density attached single-family dwellings in related compatible uses, typically attached dwellings such as townhomes or fee simple condominiums, at a minimum floor area of 1,200 square feet, brick facade having individual entrances at grade, attached integral garages that are higher density than single-family residence. Massing and scale of attached single-family residence should be similar to that of surrounding land uses. The proposed apartment building complex with 80 units in one building and shared entrances without garages would not meet this definition. Staff found that this proposed zone change was not consistent with the Sims Township master plan and the Sims Township Land Use Plan, and recommended that consistency was not achieved to the Regional Planning Commission. The Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission has bylaws that require them to be consistent with any plan that they have adopted. They do not consider the zoning or the actual site plan of a proposed zone change that is inconsistent with the adopted land use plan. And so there is a motion on page three that was unanimously passed by the Regional Planning Commission on February 10th to find that consistency with the adopted plan has not been achieved, and that therefore they recommend denial of the zone amendment. So that is as far as they got at the Regional Planning Commission. The staff report does obviously go into the rest of the development plan, so I'll go through that as well. The thoroughfare plan, Hamilton County thoroughfare plan would be met. There's more right-of-way than they need along the road currently, probably related to the construction of the bridge over I-71 when they built 71. As far as the zoning resolution for Sims Township, there were a number of issues with zoning compliance. The first of which is that the zoning resolution allows a maximum of 10 units per acre in the O-Residence District, and the proposal is for 22.2 units to the acre, which is significantly higher than the maximum. There is no higher-density zoning district in Sims Township, so the maximum can be varied as part of a planned unit development approval by the township trustees. So this is something they can ask for a variance to. However, based on the lack of consistency with the land use plan, staff did not support the increased density for this project, and does not recommend a variance. Transition area regulations for the OO District require a 40-foot front yard and rear yard setback. The building would be set back 0.8 feet from the right-of-way of Snyder Road. Again, that's because there's more right-of-way than is typically necessary for a road of that size, as I stated in the thoroughfare plans discussion. However, the building wouldn't be 50 feet away from the right-of-way even if it were sized appropriately. So it's still closer to the road than is required by this section of the zoning code. There are transition parking regulations that require a 20-foot parking setback. The parking lot would not be set back 20 feet from either Snyder Road or the adjacent Five Seasons Sports Club on the side yard or the other side yard that runs along I-71. Obviously, there would be limited impact of having parking closer along I-71 right-of-way. But again, because there are three sides that they don't meet this requirement on, they don't meet it on either side or the front, indicates that the intensity of the development could be reduced to meet this requirement. Basically, they're putting a lot on this site, and they're not meeting the requirements for setbacks. There's also a height issue. The transition regulations require a maximum height of two stories or 30 feet. They're proposing a three-story, 58-foot-tall building, which is significantly larger than what the zoning resolution allows. Landscaping and lighting, they didn't submit specific landscaping or lighting plans. They are showing 25-foot light poles on their plan, which is 10 feet taller than the maximum pole height of 15 feet that's permitted currently in the zoning resolution. They did not show signage. Staff suggested allowing a smaller sign if the request were to be approved, because it's in a mostly residential area rather than an office or retail area. And then there are 20-foot, there is a 20-foot boundary buffer and a 10-foot streetscape buffer that's required for this development. They're asking for modifications to a number of areas of the streetscape and boundary buffer as well. Similar to the parking setback, it just seems like this is too big of a development for the site. They don't meet the required setbacks or buffer areas. So based on the lack of consistency with the adopted land use plan and the numerous zoning issues, staff recommended denial of the zone change as a whole. And again, as I stated, it did go to the Regional Planning Commission. The Regional Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend against it, and the zone change process brings it for a public hearing tonight to this commission for a recommendation to the Sims Township trustees, who will have the ultimate authority on zone changes in Sims Township, for a future public hearing after your recommendation, no matter what you recommend. So that was a lot. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that dissertation. I have a question. Did you, was, did the applicant meet with you and discuss the program as well as discuss your concerns?
I have spoken to the applicant numerous times in the last three or four years about various development proposals on this property. So yes, he's well aware of the way that the process works.
Okay. And did the applicant at all change the plan based on your discussions?
Like I said, I've seen a number of proposals. This proposal was the first for a full-blown apartment-style apartment building that I had seen. There's been numerous proposals for offices or some type of attached/office mixed-use development. Like I said, we've had four or five staff review conferences for different developments. This is the first apartment building that I've seen.
But I'm just trying to get clear. So when you, when they made the application and submitted it, you provided staff comments.
Yes.
Was there any response back, like, or just thank you, and we're going to go to the meeting?
We redlined the plans for technical issues with the documents themselves and sent them back. They fixed those issues. They did reduce the number of units, as I said, from when we got it. There was a discrepancy. The letter said 100-unit building. The plan showed 120-unit building. So we used the 120 for the documents that we put together at the beginning. They did come back with revised plans that showed 80. I'm not sure if that had anything to do with our concerns. There wasn't a lot of discussion with staff other than they understood that staff was going to recommend denial of the zone change request based on the land use plan alone.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Brian while he's standing here? We can
Do you have a question?
Certainly ask more later.
Did they provide building elevations?
No, they did not.
I'm confused how a three-story building is 58 feet tall. I mean, even if you had 15-feet stories, that'd still be 45.
I'm not sure. I think there's going to be, this may even be like a three-and-a-half story building. It's going to be a walkout. It's on the side of a hill. It might be three stories in the front and four in the back. I'm not sure, because we don't have the elevations.
Okay. Yeah, I'd also be curious about, you know, the aesthetics and the building materials and all of that as well.
So just to clarify that, because you brought it up, going through the zone change process in Sims Township, you are required to go back, come back, I'm sorry, to this commission for a final development plan approval with all of the details.
Gotcha.
Like your construction-ready documents, basically. So that's when you would see detailed landscaping and lighting and building elevations and building materials plans and signage plans, things like that.
Okay, thanks.
So based on that, I mean, there's a, you did a detailed description of different outdoor lighting, landscaping, transitional height. Are we necessarily voting on that tonight? Or are we just voting to, recommending, excuse me, to the board that we're in favor or denial of the zoning change? Are we actually getting into the nuts and bolts of this?
It is a planned district, so you are getting into the nuts and bolts of the plan.
Given the, and I thought I was, but based on just this, this is the only document that we have?
The set of documents that that's a part of, yes.
But I mean, as far as understanding what we're reviewing, this is all we have?
Right.
There's no elevations, there's no, it's just words.
As part of, as part of zone changes, though, at this point in the process, we don't typically have building elevations worked out or building materials. I mean, not we, I'm not building it, but staff doesn't usually have those details at this point. There's a, they're not required to submit anything other than a site plan to go through a planned unit development approval process. The more information they give, the more comfortable people are, the better. It usually helps your chances of going through this process, but it's not required. So what they've given us is somewhere in the middle. It's not the minimum amount of detail that you can give us, but it's obviously not the full-blown. You know, there's a significant cost associated with doing all of those final detailed plans that, you know, you lose if the zone change is denied. But that's the point of having a conceptual zone change process and a final development plan process afterwards, so that you can get the zone change through. If it gets approved, then you spend the money on all the engineering documents, and you have all the details approved as part of the final development plan.
So, and I fully understand it, and I appreciate the explanation. So where to decide on all these variants, I think there's four that they listed in the letter, based on this drawing, and that would carry forward, not necessarily knowing what it is, and I understand, but in my mind, it's a planned unit development, so therefore, it's really, it's on us to make that decision, but it's, if this goes through the board, gets approved, it comes back to us, are we able to change any of this, having more information?
There's several ways to handle this, that type. Your question, I completely understand. They're asking you for a 58-foot building height, but you don't know what it looks like.
I know, yeah.
So if you, you know, feel strongly that 58-story-foot-tall building is fine, then you grant the variant. You recommend granting the variant. It's not you grant it, but you recommend to the trustees that they grant the variance if you're okay with that. If you're not okay with that, you can do one of two things. You can limit it by condition to the maximum height that you're comfortable with, either what the code allows or some other height. Or you can be silent. Just don't grant the variance at this point. If it goes to the trustees and the trustees' resolution, whatever conditions that are in that resolution can't be changed by you as the zoning commission when you're doing the final development plan review. They have to meet every condition that's in the trustees' resolution, because they were created by the trustees, and they can only be changed by the trustees. If they come to you, and there's a condition that says the maximum building height is 30 feet, and they want you to grant as part of their final development plan a 45-foot-tall building, you don't have the authority to do that. But if it doesn't say what the maximum height is in the trustees' resolution, and they ask you for something taller, you have the authority to grant it. If you grant it now, they are granted that height, and you don't get to go back on it when they come back to the final development plan. Does that make sense?
But we're only recommending to the board.
Yes.
But I mean, that's the, that's what I'm struggling with. You're asking me to review something off of this.
Right, yes.
And to someone, I mean, to her point, it's like, how do you get to 58 on three stories?
Well, I mean, the applicant is here.
I understand. I'm just, I'm just discussing out loud here. I'm just struggling to, I'm just struggling with what the information we have. There's a lot of verbiage, but not enough pictures.
If you, if you don't feel comfortable granting a variance or recommending, sorry, recommending a variance to the height as part of this zone change, but you want to be open to it in the future, maybe if you had had the elevations, you were thinking, maybe I would support that, then just don't say anything. Just don't grant them the variance, and it will go to the trustees. If the trustees don't say anything about the height, when it gets back to you, then you will have the authority to consider a taller building.
Is what they-
That goes for every other condition as well. If you put it, if you recommend it as a condition, you won't be able to change it when it comes back to you as part of the final development plan.
Well, would they submit it to us be the exact same submittal that goes to the trustees, though? Will all this be in their report as well?
Yes. What's going through the zone change process now, we'll get to them as part of their public hearing, yes. Everything that you've seen, plus everything that comes after this meeting, will all get transmitted to the trustees.
And then just one more. I'm sorry, I'm taking everyone's time, but I apologize.
No, we're not going anywhere.
The planned residence and its subservient office, which is not capitalized, is that something that's in our zoning code, or is that something that the applicant is asking for?
No, that's the actual title of the OO District in the zoning resolution.
Okay, I just, okay.
It's like that with the non-capitalized-
So it's not like the Leasing Center is subservient office?
No, that's the title of the OO. It used to be the OO Planned Office District. Now it's the OO Planned Residence with Subservient Office District. That's the official title. There was a text amendment for that.
Okay.
Like six or seven years ago.
Okay. I'm sorry. That's all the questions I have.
Great.
Maybe I'm very new to this committee, but is it our responsibility to make a decision whether this zoning change goes from A to OO?
So you're making a recommendation to the trustees as to whether you do or don't think that the zone change is appropriate for this property?
Right, because there seems to be quite a few discrepancies in the plan with what's consistent with zoning OO or 00. Like, there are, you know, the height restrictions, the setbacks, the, but there's numerous concerns, it seems to me. Topography of the area seems to me a big concern, and there is a big report on that, but I couldn't understand from the technical notes whether that was going to be a concern down the road in the future for landslide, that sort of thing.
So they'll, when they go through, if they were to get it approved, and when they go to build it, they would have to go through the Hamilton County Planning and Development Building Division, which would include the Soil and Water District and the Stormwater Infrastructure Division that would review the soils and the boreings or anything else that are required to assure that the development doesn't fall down the hill.
Right. And there are two hills, one on either side.
Yeah, right, right.
Does it matter what our recommendation is? Does it change how the board has to vote?
No. There used to be a requirement that the trustees would have to be unanimous to over, to change any part of the zoning commission's decision, but the state law was changed for that a number of years ago. So a simple majority of the trustees go, so no, they're not bound to take your recommendation.
Anyone else have any questions for Brian while he's, and we can ask additional questions later?
I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here? Please state your name and your address.
Charles Baberman, Marshall, 255 East Fifth Street, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45202. I am counsel for the applicant. Thank you all for the opportunity to present this project to this evening. I will answer all the questions that you had already articulated, and we're happy to answer any others you may have. We also have a presentation to go through for you that will provide some visuals regarding what we are conceptualizing for this development. And also with me is Jeff Flaherty, our engineer for the project from Cardinal Engineering. He'll be going through some of the more technical aspects as well. Do we have the, we have the slides?
Oh, sorry. I was writing.
There we go. So this is what we are proposing. It's a Class A apartment project. It's going to be a $20 million investment in the township here. 80 units, consisting of one, two, I'm sorry, one and two bedrooms. All surface parking. This is going to be a highly amenitized community to really create an upscale feel with a pool, fitness center, various other amenities that you can see on the screen there. This will partner very well with the Five Seasons Club that's adjacent to the property. And in contrast to some of the other uses that were proposed previously for this site, this is a lower-intensity use that we feel will be a better fit for the surrounding community. It's also important to note that the district that this property currently sits in, the A-Residence District, because of the topographical and other physical conditions existing on the site, is simply not realistic for development, in our opinion, of the property, and that's evidenced by the fact that it remains vacant now and has for many years. The land use plan, it does not provide, in our opinion, a viable path to developing this property. And so we view the OO District as the best path to developing a project such as this that we're proposing in a way that will create a monetary benefit for the township. It will enhance the quality of life in the area. It will provide a number of new residents that will be in the community spending money and furthering other businesses, and it will, it will be an attractive development for the surrounding community versus the vacant lot that sits there now. So we're going to go through this in more detail. As I said, our engineer, Jeff Flaherty, go through some of the specifics.
Thank you, guys, for your time here. Obviously, a very challenging site for-
Sir, could you state your name and your address, please?
Um, yes. Jeff Flaherty with Cardinal Engineering, 1 Mook Road, Wilder, Kentucky, 41071.
Thank you.
So like I was saying, obviously, from our engineering standpoint, this is a very, very challenging site. You got the interstate to the south, Snyder Road to the west, the Five Seasons to the north, and then it kind of goes in a triangle there. But the whole site sits down in a hole there, if you can, if you can see the topography there. So there is kind of a knob on the south portion, and then the rest back of the site as a hole, and then there's a stream on the northern portion there that, so we're trying to avoid the stream and get the site down far enough so you're not sitting on top of 71 there. I guess another important thing to kind of point out when you go through this is, a lot of those variances are based on a transition zone, and the transition zone is set up to differentiate this type of development from a single-family residential development. But in our case, we really don't have any single-family right next to us. So those variances, we don't feel like the transitional variances fit well here, because to the north of us, we got Five Seasons, which is a huge development, which is not single-family. And then we obviously have the expressway to the south of us, which we don't have any single-family homes there. And then Snyder Road, as he was mentioning, has a huge right-of-way there, bigger than what's required. And the stuff on the other side of the road kind of sits down in a hole, too. And as we get through these slides, I can kind of show you how this, how this will, will, will look. But I think it's very important to realize that some of those variances are based on a special part of the OO zoning, which is for transitional zones. And I think we, we meet the, we meet the code a lot better for the non-transitional zone, which we feel is more adequate for us, since we're really not up against the single-family zone to transition against. Going into that, along the south there, along the parking, we have a pretty high retaining wall. The purpose of that, like I said, is to sink that site and that parking down to keep us away from 71, so we don't have a view there. And obviously, as we get lower, it widens that area to give us enough buildable space to get in parking and to get in, get in the required building. So we can go to the next slide. So here's kind of a view from, from, looking from the interstate back at the site. To answer your question about the building height, the building is three stories from the back, and it's, it's three stories from the front and four stories from the back. It kind of falls off the hill there. There wasn't a good, the code didn't, a lot of codes will define where you measure that building height from. It didn't exactly go into that in the Sims Township code, so we kind of put, put the height from the, from the back of the worst-case scenario. But as you can see there from our picture, it's, it's three stories from the front, four from the back, and really kind of, kind of how we sit down in the hole, you really won't see but the top floor, maybe four and a half from Snyder Road, and you'll be down below the expressway and the vegetation. Next slide. So this is kind of from the western, the view from the western portion there, off of Snyder Road. I got a video later that will maybe show it a little better, but, but that road coming off Snyder Road down to that parking lot's a pretty steep grade, so you're, you're dropping really fast to get from Snyder Road down to the, to the parking area there.
How much lower, how much are you lowering the site?
So that, from Snyder Road to the parking lots, approximately 20, 20 to 25 feet, depending on where you're at on that parking, parking lot. Like I said, I got a video that kind of does a little drive-through, but you can see that.
So the front parking field and the base grade on the front is 20 feet lower, and then the back's obviously lower than that?
Correct.
Thank you.
Is it a three-story building or a four-story?
So from, from the front, from the parking lot, it's three stories. But it's like a walkout house. So from the back, it falls off a cliff there. So if you're looking at it from the back of the building, which if you hit the next slide, if you're looking from the back, it's four stories.
What's this right here might be?
That's the back. That's the rear. And if you go back a slide.
But that's the driveway right there. That's the front.
That's facing north.
No, go back a slide. Go to the slide you just had up, right there. There's the driveway right there in, on my side.
Correct.
And it shows one, two, three, four stories.
Four from the back. Correct. Go back to the front.
But it shows four stories on both of them.
No, right, here's three.
No, go to the slide you just showed me. You keep walking away from it. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. Explain that.
That's all the rear of the building.
The other side is three.
But it's a four-story building.
From one.
The whole side is four stories.
On that side.
On that side, but on the other side, it's all three-story. Yes, that would be looking from Five Seasons.
But you're saying that the Snyder Road was three stories. That's Snyder Road right there.
So from the, I'm saying, from the, we're calling the parking lot the front of the building, and the, towards Five Seasons, the back of the building.
But zoning front is Snyder Road.
Okay.
Right? I'm just trying to understand what you're explaining.
Yeah, so from Snyder Road, you'll see about a, you'll see, well, you'll see it in the next slide, but you're about a, you only see about one and a half stories of that building from Snyder Road.
Okay.
Because we sit down in the hole.
Can we go to the other?
Yep. So here's, here's driving from the Five Seasons, further down from the Five Seasons with the topography there, that they kind of got a slope there. So.
So where are you? Are we on, is that road Snyder? Is that the driveway?
This is Snyder, down further past the Five Seasons. Yep.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Going towards the highway.
Next. So this is way up from behind, above, this would be like from the Five Seasons roof.
What are we looking at to the west?
To, well, it's, it's all flipped backwards. So you got the expressway there to the south with all the vehicles. And then Snyder would be, if you're looking at the picture on the right-hand side there, which is the east.
Okay.
So.
The west, right?
West.
Yeah.
East in this, yeah.
So that'll be Sycamore Township where the, I think it's apartments on the, across the city, or is that single-family houses?
See, that's, that would be.
That's Somerset, and there are single families.
Yeah, I think you'll, the next video I think will really, so this was, this is a view from Snyder Road. So going down to that entrance, so you can see about the top two floors of that building. The other view is from the houses, the single-family house, well, they're not single-family, I think they're duplexes or attached family. So that would be the closest house. If you're looking across, you can kind of see the berm there, how they sit down below Snyder Road as well. And you can barely see the roof line of, of our building over there. So if you go the next one, if you hit the play button down there, bottom left. So this is a little video. So the Five Seasons is to your right, and this is kind of the pre-development condition.
I don't see a play, play button unless you need to come show me where it is. It's not on that, but it's.
If you don't have it, I got it. Just the video.
I'm sorry. I'm not a technical person.
So that building's a Five Seasons, and we're in the green area between Five Seasons and the expressway there.
On my computer, there's like another screen.
Do you need? There we go.
Oh, there it goes.
So this is kind of driving down, driving down the interstate there. You can kind of see the existing vegetation to our right. And then this would be over across the street there with the single-family home. And then we'll kind of come back down Snyder Road here. So as you can see, we're kind of down in this hole. You can kind of see the Five Seasons roof behind us, and then you'll see, see our building here to the, spin it over here to the right. So there's a single family. So that's the berm, that's the existing pond, and that's our building kind of down in that hole. So hopefully that guy gives you kind of a, a better picture. So, so yes, our height, our height from the back is four stories, our height from the front is three stories, but you see very little of this building anyway, just the way that you sit down in the, in the hole with the topography.
And are you proposing a flat roof?
That building, that, yes. It, well, it, it slopes, but it's not a gabled roof. It slopes from the front to the rear.
And is there going to be equipment on the roof?
On that, I, we don't have those details all, all worked out yet. I'm sure that with that type of roof, you're usually not on the, on the roof, or if they are, they're hidden usually.
That looks like a ridiculously steep driveway going down in that.
I mean, it meets, it's, it's a 10%, I mean, it meets the, the regulations. I mean, it is, it's steep, but it's not too steep for, you know, a car. It's what your average road would be at a 10%.
So if we're looking at this, this is a three, four split, right? So you, you'd walk in on this level, and the units on the backside are your basement in a sense.
So the basement would be all the amenities. We'll have a walkout. So the units are the three stories, and then most of the amenities are in the basement. There's, that's where the clubhouse is going to be. There's going to be a walkout deck with the swimming pool, I think a yoga studio, and some, some other amenities in the basement. There might be a couple of units in the basement, but, but the majority of the, the back is, the bottom floor basement would be where all the amenities are located.
And then on the drawing that you submitted, it says, proposed deck patio or pool area. There's a "or" in there.
I, I think it's meant to be all of them.
Okay. And you're the civil engineer?
That is correct.
And so from a civil engineering standpoint, you've done a great deal of detail to figure out how to get the pad in position.
Correct. And how to get the pad in position and how to get something in there that, I mean, financially works too.
Sure.
I mean, we, we had to cut, and you want to get that site, you don't want that site just staring at 71. You're not going to be able to, to sell that. So to get enough space in there to get the building and enough parking, we had to bring the site down quite a bit. I mean, there's going to be quite a bit of earthwork that, that goes on and that they're going to have to haul, haul out of there.
And then did an architect do the renderings, or was that the civil engineer?
So both. The architect did the building, and then I, I plugged it in, in our software to, to put it at the right elevations and make sure that the topography matched what's actually out there.
And then one of the things, and I know it was addressed, there's different numbers of the number of units. On the sheet that we have, it says 120, then I heard 100, then I hear 80. And then I looked at parking. Does, what is the?
We have the exact amount of parking right now that you need for 80 units.
And what is that per unit?
It's one and a half per unit, I'm pretty certain. Yeah.
One and a half per unit, okay.
Yep.
Jeff will be available for any other questions you have. I do want to specifically go through the requests we've made for both the rezoning as well as the variances so that the commission understands exactly what it is that we're looking for. To the point on the unit count, after discussions with staff and working with them, we, we reduced the unit count down to 80. And so while it's not in your packet, in, in the staff report packet that was issued, a revised narrative request for both our variances and the specifics of our development is included, and that is, includes an 80-unit count for the 22.22 units per acre that staff mentioned earlier is being requested. As I mentioned previously, the OO district does provide flexibility for increased density as well as variances to support a planned development rather than the O district or other districts within the code that are not set up to, to be adjusted on a development-by-development basis. So as staff mentioned earlier, the, although we do have a list of multiple variances that is a common request and one that is appropriate with a rezoning to a planned district such as OO. And, well, we chose OO specifically because it would minimize the number of variances that we would need for this project due to a larger density, a higher building height, setback requirements that, that would at least minimize what we need to request in terms of variances for, for the project. We also, we met with the residents, and we incorporated their concerns into this development. Specifically, we, we moved the curb cut based on residents' concerns, and that curb cut location has been approved by the county engineer where it's located. We lowered the building, pushed the grade down so as to reduce the, the building height as it's seen by nearby residents based on those, those concerns. And we are committed to having a significant vegetative buffer around the project. So as to, again, minimize any visual impact of the prop, of the project for, for any residents that live in the area. Now, specifically regarding the variances, as I mentioned, we are requesting 22.22 units per acre. And that is, is needed to create a sufficiently dense project to make this financially viable. And in line with what I mentioned earlier, with the current zoning, the, the limited, the infrastructure that is required to develop on this site requires a higher unit count in order to make a project viable. The single-family residences or attached duplexes would not provide that, that sufficient density, nor would the 10 units per acre allow us to, to build a building that would make this a viable project from an economic perspective. The second variance we're requesting is for building height. We are requesting approval for a 58-foot-tall building. But as you can see in the video that was shown, this building will not look like a 58-foot-tall building from any side due to its, the reduction of the grade, the presence of the highway, the height of the road on the western side. And it's important that particularly the grade, and you can see it in the picture behind you, the Five Seasons, immediately to the rear of this property, is, is going to be a much taller building from a visual perspective for any resident who is looking in the area. So this, this building is not going to create a, a visual impact that is going to rival the, the Five Seasons building. In contrast, it's going to look much less obtrusive, to the extent that it can even be seen at all, which it will not be able to be seen in many areas due to the landscape buffer that will be installed. And the next variance we're requesting is due, is for the setback from the, from Snyder Road. As staff mentioned, we are requesting a 0.8-foot setback. However, that is due to the fact that the right-of-way is much larger than the actual road that sits within the right-of-way. And our, our building will be setback from the road 70.3 feet from the western edge of Snyder Road. That, that is well in excess of the actual setback requirements within the code, which is, I believe, 40 feet. So although this is a, it's a variance, we consider it a paper variance. And there is, it's not going to be seen as a building right on top of the roadway by anyone in the area because of that significant roadway, um, excuse me, right-of-way that exists to the east of Snyder Road. Other variances we're requesting pertain to the transitional requirements that exist in the code for OO residence districts. And as Jeff mentioned, the reason that those transitional requirements apply is because this property abuts A-zoned property. However, that A-zoned property is not actually residential, residentially-used property. That A-zoned property is the Five Seasons Sports Club, which is clearly not a residential use, however the zoning is A-residential. So the, the rationale for requiring a transition from an OO district to an A district does not exist in this situation because there is no abutting single-family residential usage. You have a sports club, a main thoroughfare in Snyder Road, and I-71 buffering this, the site on all three sides. And those properties will transition this to the residential that exists on the other side of the highway and on the other side of Snyder Road. The, we are requesting a variance for the landscape buffer along Snyder Road. However, as I mentioned, that exists because of, the, the need for the variance exists because of the, the width of the right-of-way. But we, although the right-of-way is there, we are committed to installing a landscape buffer within the property that we own that sits within the, the paper right-of-way so as to create a, a significant visual screen of this site from the residents. And that was evidenced in the, in the video that, that we showed. So we are, we're here to answer any questions you may have. As staff mentioned, we will be back here if this were to be approved to get development approval. And at that time, we would have much more detailed engineering plans showing our, the specifics of the development from a fully engineered perspective, as well as the, the landscape buffers that were going to be installed, the signage, and all of the other site-specific concerns you may have. We will, we, we plan to and are happy to address those at that time to your satisfaction. But here at this time, we are simply seeking approval for the conceptual plan for this site, which involves the rezoning to double-O zoning and these variances which are needed to develop a project of this scope on the site. So again, we're here for any questions. We thank you for your time.
Before you leave, can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
And maybe, engineer, when you went for the curb cut approval, and I'm assuming in that process you were talking to the county engineer?
Yep.
Was there any discussion as to the width of the right-of-way and possibly purchasing some of that right-of-way from the county? This is a county road, is that fair?
We own.
Yep. So it's, it's right-of-way easement that exists. That is.
How about abandoning the easement then? How's that?
Did you have any questions?
I, I think that our client would have no prob, I mean, it's kind of a weird piece of property there because it's not really right-of-way. It's, our client owns that piece. It's his parcel, and it has an easement through it to allow the road there. So I'm sure we could, I'm sure he'd be amendable to clean that up and dedicate actual right-of-way.
Did you have any conversations with him about it?
I did not have those conversations. But at the time that we met him there, I don't even think that we knew. We were just looking for site distance, and we were looking at other, other things for the curb cut as opposed to, I think we did that when we got the ALTA survey, and we were kind of deeper involved in the project. We realized that, hey, this isn't even right-of-way. It's, it's owned land by my client that has an easement for Snyder Road through it.
And I can confirm that if, if the county were willing to relinquish the easement, we would be more than happy to, to effectuate that.
It seems like it. It seems like, it almost looks like at one time, it was set up for like an interchange of some sort.
I don't disagree, yeah.
And I know that when they were putting the interstates in, they kind of did land grabs that way, so, just curious.
And I just wanted to point out the other thing. In the code, and this is just reading from their code, it allows the Planning and Zoning Commission and the commissioners, this is for height adjustments as well as buffer adjustments. "In a case where the topography or other physical features of the track or its relation to the surrounding properties may make complete compliance with the yard requirements as prescribed in this section unnecessary or undesirable, the Sims Township Zoning Commission may modify such requirements to extend the warranty by such physical conditions provided the surrounding property and public welfare are not adequate, or, and the public welfare are adequately protected." So, with, obviously, we feel like this is a perfect site for making those adjustments just because of the unique conditions of the topography, the 71 Interstate, and the main Snyder Road and that extra right-of-way. We feel like we kind of fit into that narrative for these changes, so.
So, Charlie, you, can you, do you have a letter from the engineer's office concerning the curb cut?
I have.
That they've approved that curb cut?
Yes.
We have an email approval.
Okay. Thank you. And then, also, did the property owner consider, you mentioned the financial aspect of it, that's not necessarily part of our thought process, just so you know, but I'm curious, did the applicant consider a different type of project, like maybe townhomes, and fall within the 10-units-per-acre guidelines? That would be about 35, 36 units at that point, and townhomes would be potentially a for-sale product or an owner-owned or a ownership-type of a product? I'm just curious if the owner had considered that.
We did consider that as well as a number of other uses, and because of the cost to develop on such a difficult geographic site, that we need to have a higher density in order to justify the development costs that would be, that would exist regardless of how many units are built. So, it was considered, and it was not a financially valuable project, and while I understand that that's not the township's concern, what we do believe is the township's concern is realizing an economic benefit from a tax perspective for the site and ensuring that it is developed in a way that will provide a financial benefit for the township.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. We might bring you back for some more questions, but great presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak for the project? Anyone speaking for the project? Is there anyone here would like to speak against the project? Having heard none, I will close the public hearing at 7:55. So, any comments, questions from our side? Questions to Brian or questions to the applicant?
Yeah, I mean, I have, I have concerns with the density and the height. I feel like the development looks crowded, like they're trying to fit too much on this hard site, and I understand the need to reach a certain density for economic viability, but I also think that creating one large building on a lot that has a lot of topography is a lot harder than creating multiple smaller buildings that could be spread out and could be more in line with the topography. It just, it feels like it's too much and it's crammed, so I have concerns with recommending approval on this.
Okay.
And I'd like to kind of build on that, and my concern is having lived in the neighborhood for over 25 years and seen the widening of Montgomery Road, the flattening of Montgomery Road, in 20 years' time, it could happen that Snyder Road will also need some work. Snyder Road has a lot of steep hills, and I could see down the road, the state of Ohio wanting to flatten that out a little bit and widen Snyder Road. We already have 0.8-foot buffer area. The building, yes, will be 70 feet from the road, however, should ODOT come in and change Snyder Road in 10 years, they could easily take 30 feet of that, and your building will be sitting exactly on the road if that happens. So, I'm looking way ahead, and I see red flags.
I personally, from my perspective, I always like when we get the presentation, but not having it in my packet makes it harder for us to grant certain requests that you're having. From a use standpoint, I am in support of this. I think this is the right use for this piece of property, and I think you've done a really good job of laying it out. I just don't know exactly what we're getting based on what we've seen tonight.
I applaud the engineering effort, and what you've put there is impressive, in line with the topography and the size. I'm concerned about the intensity. But looking forward, I also have to consider ultimately what will the site be used for? If it's not this, then what? What's the best use of that site in the current area? But my biggest concern is just the overall intensity.
I also applaud the presentation. I do think that you all spent money on the PowerPoint presentation, maybe could have tried to do some of that stuff and give it to staff and have it part of our package. That might have helped a little bit, and I say this from experience. I work in a lot of different municipalities around the region here, and I make presentations. So, good presentation, but I think you need to put your best foot forward. I could have done a little different job there, but all in all, good presentation. I do have concerns about the density as well. You know, going from 10 to 22, could there be a model-back thing? And I understand, I get it, you know, if you're going to bring in amenities, you have to get the scale. I understand that completely. But I, at this point, I'm not sure that I could move forward based on what I'm seeing at this point. So, is there a recommendation from anybody at this point?
So, at this time, do we need to recommend on all of their variance requests? Or if we recommend denial, do we have to address each one of them?
No.
Okay.
If you recommend denial, then you're basically recommending denial, and you don't have to get into the variances in any way, shape, or form at this point. Now, it could easily go to the trustees, because this is a recommending board. The trustees could turn around and say, "We approve it. It gets kicked back to us for the final development plan," of which Mr. Baverman was correct. Then there'd be a lot more information come before us. He'd come before us with a lot of these questions answered, and then we would move appropriately at that point.
I would like to note that I think a lot of the variance requests are due to their requested density, and if the density was lower, then the number of parking spaces would be reduced, which would reduce their buffer requests and allow them more space for landscaping and buffering off the highway. And so, I agree that residential is appropriate here, and I don't have an issue with a single building if it was smaller and maybe designed, I don't know, in a slightly different way. Again, I know that's not, I'm not trying to redesign the site here, but I, you know, I would like to note that I think, again, that residential's not the wrong option. I just think this is not in line with the land use plan and too dense for the property, which is causing a lot of the issues that they're requesting variances from. So, I guess with that, unless there's anybody else, I can make a motion.
Can I ask a question of the applicant? Is that okay, George?
Yeah. Could you explain just a little, like, the size of your units and the tenants that you're trying to attract?
We have not drilled down from an architectural perspective on exactly what the square footage of a unit size would be, but overall, I think this is going to be intended and marketed for purposes of a young professional community with some empty nesters as well moving in, but the 20-year-olds and the 50-year-olds essentially would be.
And is it the intention of the applicant to be the developer of it or to rezone it and just to rezone?
It is the intention of the applicant to be the developer, and Morelli Group has a history of development throughout the greater Cincinnati area.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant or Mr. Snyder? Anybody would like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to recommend denial of the rezoning request from A to double-O Planned Residence with subservient office to afford a recommendation of denial to the township trustees on that.
Is that enough for you, Brian?
Yep. Just to remind everybody that a yes vote on a motion to deny is for denial, and a no vote is to not deny.
We have a second? Great. Kim, may we have a roll call, please?
Brian, you want to explain that one more time just so everybody understands?
A yes vote is for denial.
Okay.
It's in favor of recommending denial.
Ms. Fields? Yes. Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Edder?
No.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman? Yes.
Next case, I'd like to open up the public hearing for case Sims dash number 2014-dash-02, Silver Spring House 3. May we have the staff report?
Brian Snyder again. I prepared the staff report for this case. This is a final development plan modification for the Silver Spring House on the corner of East Kemper and Snyder Road, not very far from the last zone change request. This property has an extensive history. It started as a non-conforming use in a residential district. It has been rezoned several times over the years to address building expansions mostly. A lot of the resolutions of approval since the first one in 2002 included maximum building sizes, so every time they added another 400 square feet to the building, it had to go through a full-blown zone change. The township removed that condition from the 2014 approval, so this, that allows for this commission to hear requests such as this for building additions. The most recent final development plan modification for this site was for a 3,158-square-foot addition. It was approved by this commission in 2020. It included a 500-square-foot storage shed, some minor modification to the actual properties itself, but in that 3,158-square-foot was an addition for customer areas as well as, I believe it's a cooler or kitchen addition onto the side of the building. It's not that you can see it very well, but the plan on the left, the gray part, is the addition on the north side of the building, so all 3,158 square feet of the addition minus the small kitchen bump-out was straight onto the north side of the building. There was outdoor seating that was approved as part of that as well. There were several public hearings held on that request that were continued prior to the final approval of that request, but that is today's approved plan. Tomorrow, the owner of the property could walk in and ask for a permit to build that plan, and we would have to issue it because that is the approved plan as approved by this commission and as filed with the county. So, that's what they started with, and that's what's approved in 2020. This request is for a modification to that modification. They did not build that addition. COVID started, they put up a tent for temporary outdoor seating, which they're required removed now that the indoor seating is no longer restricted, and so they're at the point where they're getting ready to build the addition, and they don't want to build the addition that they had approved, they want to build a smaller addition. So, on the plan on the right, you can see the dark gray area is pretty much the same bump-out on the right side of the building for the kitchen, but the addition itself is no longer a large room on the north side. It's an expansion of the north and west sides of the existing building for additional seating. The proposed addition on that plan that's before you tonight is 2,250 square feet, so a little bit shy of 1,000 square feet smaller than what is currently approved. They also, instead of doing a 500-square-foot storage shed, they are proposing to move an existing shed over between the dumpster enclosures, which is the smaller gray dot kind of off to the right of the building. On the plan on the left, it's the larger gray spot on the right side of the building, that was the 500-square-foot new storage shed that was proposed at that time. The shed that would move as part of this request is one that's already there, and it's painted the same, has the same materials and colors as the existing structure. It's already behind the kitchen. I believe that some of the stuff that's in that is what they want to put the addition onto the back of the floor, but you can ask the applicant to describe that. So, that's what's being proposed, a smaller addition, a smaller storage shed, and a smaller outdoor seating area. So, the site would be required to provide 112 parking spaces. The number of required parking spaces, the number of provided parking spaces, and then parking issues was the main discussion point at the meeting in 2020 over the last final development plan that was approved. Again, 112 parking spaces are required for this-sized restaurant, and 141 are shown on the site of the restaurant with an additional 19 that are shared with the Kemper Road office complex next door. So, they're well over the minimum zoning requirement for parking, and that would remain. The previous plan showed removal of 12 parking spaces. This plan shows removal of two parking spaces. The other main thing that is being proposed is they're proposing to close the right-in, right-out access point onto East Kemper Road that's in front of the building. Staff recommended the removal of that right-in, right-out curb cut as part of the zone change probably back in 2002. At least in 2014, we recommended that again, so staff's very much in favor of removing that right-in, right-out curb cut. They've got a full-access curb cut that exists on the other side of the building and another one onto Snyder Road, so that's another part of the requests before you tonight. What we do with these is, compared to the conditions of the township trustees, as I stated earlier, you can't change those as part of a final development plan modification. We did go through those. There are some discrepancies in the landscape plan as to what's actually there and what's being removed that would just need to be cleaned up. If this were approved, they would, we would recommend that they submit another landscape plan that clarifies the issues that we identified. Other than that, they are consistent with all of the variances and conditions that were approved by the township trustees. The details on the outdoor seating area, the approval from 2020 restricted the use, that there be no outdoor music venues allowed on the property. That was a condition of approval, so they're currently not allowed to have outdoor music as part of the approved addition. And the outdoor seating area for that 2020-approved plan was for eight tables with 34 seats and 13 bar stools that were to be located adjacent to windows that opened up to a new indoor bar area. So, that northern addition had an indoor bar area with roll-up doors. They had bar seats on the outside with an additional 8. They had bar seats on the outside with an additional eight tables and 34 seats in the outdoor seating area. The proposal for this is to reduce that area to five tables with 26 total seats and no bar stools and no outdoor bar area. A similar condition about outdoor music venues could be added as part of this. You have the authority to add conditions to this request as well. And then there's some discussion about the storage shed in the staff report, but as I said, it's an existing shed that it would be moved from its current location to a spot between two brick dumpster enclosures that already exist. So as I stated, it's a smaller addition than what's currently approved, than what they're currently allowed to build. It's a reduced outdoor seating area over what they're currently allowed to have. And so that is the request before you sign. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'm just curious, why would they have to come before us at this point?
So you approved a specific plan that they're not building. So the plan is changing. The outdoor seating area slightly moved from where it was. It was directly off the northeast corner of the building. Now it's straight off the north side of the building. The addition's not the same. The kitchen addition's not exactly the same size. The shed is different than the new storage building that they were proposing to build last time. So it's a modification to the plan, and that's the reason. We don't have staff-level final development plan modification authority in Sims Township.
Got it.
Brian, I have a question for you. Why was it recommended to remove the existing right-in-right-out curb cut?
Because that curb cut's fairly close to the intersection of Snyder Road and East Kemper Road. It's fairly close to the other full access curb cut that they were proposing to put in at that time. And we felt it was unnecessary, an additional, a third curb cut for the one development site.
I'm just concerned that that curb cut is really close to the traffic lights at the corner of Snyder and Kemper. There are a lot of student drivers in that area. That would mean that young drivers could come out of that exit and try and make a left onto Kemper Road.
Oh, no. They're removing that driveway altogether. Like, they're going to take all the pavement out, replace it with grass.
So there'll be no entrance there at all?
No entrance at all.
Okay. Then I see. I thought you were just taking the curb out according to that picture. And I just want to clarify, the restriction on the music will still be in place?
If you approve it that way. That's why I mentioned it. Because this is a different final development plan. So if you want to push that condition forward, you have to specifically state that as part of your.
We have to request that?
Right. Yes.
Okay.
Based on that, Brian, are we nullifying the last development we agreed to and starting new, or we're just modifying what we did?
Well, so if you approve what they're asking for, that's what they can build. If you deny the final development plan that they're asking, modification that they're asking for, they can still build the previous one. So by approving this plan, you're removing the ability to build the old plan.
What about the conditions?
This would overlay or overwrite that one.
The conditions carry forward?
No, no. That's what I just said. The conditions from the Township Trustees will always remain because that's in the Township Trustees' resolution. That will ever go away. Your condition, the only conditions that there were, that there was as part of that was that there not be any outdoor music venues. So if that's.
Does that need to be restated?
Yes. That's what, yes.
Yes, that's what he said.
I'm just confused. It doesn't matter as to why, but never mind.
Well, this action is basically overriding the previous action.
We're nullifying that?
Yeah, that's right.
That answers my question.
But that was the only one, was the outdoor music?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I mean, I wasn't here for the last one, so I'm just trying to catch it.
And do we have any authority or any statement on the tent that's no longer supposed to be there?
The tent is no longer supposed to be there. They were cited for that. We're working on that with the zoning inspector to get that removed. I think they want to build this addition in place of that.
Can that be a condition?
That it be removed? Yes.
Can it be conditioned?
I would suggest not doing it that way because we're in court with the housing court about that right now. I would treat it as a separate issue. It's a zoning violation at this point.
But can it be in condition of this going forward?
That there be no tent or that the tent be removed?
No, there be no tent.
Yes. The only thing I'll say about that is we allowed the tent because of the COVID restrictions at the time. That was the reason that it was allowed.
But it's still there, right?
Yes. That's why we're in housing court.
Any other questions for Mr. Snyder? Thank you.
Thank you.
May we hear from the applicant? Please state your name and your address, sir.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brian Dahl with Cincinnati United Contractors, 7143 East Kemper Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45249, representing the Silver Spring House. And I was the one that submitted this application. Brian Snyder did a good job going through all the changes of how they've gone from original submission to now. Just wanted to make a couple of clarifications from his staff report. Just wanted to make sure on the parking, what we understand is to be Silver Spring House's parking. So out of the 141 that was spoken about, that includes all of this area right here. And then there's an additional 19, which kind of straddle this property line between the condos and Silver Spring House. These 19 are not shared. They are exclusively Silver Spring Houses. The ones that are shared are the 52 that go from this point all the way down to the very end. Those are the non-exclusive ones that are shared between the condos and Silver Spring House.
And that's an existing shared parking agreement?
Yes, it's an existing shared parking agreement. You got it. Just wanted to make sure I cleared that up.
Have you seen, has staff seen the reciprocal easement?
Oh, yes. Yes, we have.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then the other thing I just wanted to mention is regarding the speakers and music, there is no intention to have loudspeakers or music outside in that outdoor part of the facility. Other than that, I believe Brian Snyder has gone through fairly comprehensive. We are making this smaller, and the building height is going to be the same building height that you see out there. We're going to do the same architectural feel and flair. It's going to come out the same. We're just basically pushing it out and making it bigger. And you know, the idea is, that's the reason why we're coming in front of you is because that tent, you know, you guys want to get rid of that tent in the tent. They're using seats. So we basically want to replace the seats that that tent has in it for the spaces that we are adding on to. As you can see, basically it's just taking that existing mansory facade and just popping it out further, this direction and this direction in order to satisfy their seating needs. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
What changed?
What changed?
Financially.
Oh, what changed? Why they wanted to change? Oh, yeah. So before, we had a basement. We had a larger area. We had a larger kitchen. That was running them around $3.5 million. As you guys know, construction costs just kept going up and up and up, so they couldn't sustain that. So what we ended up having to do is. Down. And this is, you know, made eight at, you know, $1 million. So they scaled it down, so it was.
Anticipate it. When do you anticipate on starting on this?
As soon as possible. Basically, as soon as we get the zoning approval, I'd like to move towards construction drawings, submit it, and then start building. So hopefully within a month and a half potentially.
That's great.
So I have a question for staff, but I'll wait for any other questions for the applicant. If not.
I have one, real quick. For that area where the right-in-right-out is getting removed, it looks like part of that's going to be filled in with concrete. Is the rest just going to be filled in with grass or?
Yes.
Kind of like towards the street?
Correct. So what we're going to do is when we remove that, we're going to connect the existing sidewalk that goes through there. So we're going to connect those.
Okay.
And then we're going to have a little bit more sidewalk entrance where we have a drop curb cut that comes from the handicap park. There's falls there. So they're going to be able to traverse right up there and then straight into the main entrance. And then there is also a concrete sidewalk that comes past in front that will connect up with this sidewalk. So then there'll be a green space right here that is encompassed between this sidewalk, this sidewalk, and that sidewalk.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the project? In favor of the project? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against the project? Please state your name and address, sir.
Sure. Richard Goldberg, 8350 Port Jeanette Lane. I don't object to the project since it's being downsized. The intensity is being lessened, and I'm okay with that. But there are two concerns of mine. One is music and one is parking. I would appreciate if a condition could be no music because I live right across the street, and I go to bed early. And this past summer, they played music. And at least two nights, I couldn't, I like the music, but not when I'm trying to get to bed because I get up before 6:00 in the morning. So as long as there's a condition that there's no music, this is a residential area. I and many other residents live right across the street. We'd appreciate that there not be any outdoor music or indoor that's going to be heard. I know there have been some complaints, but they were not heated by the township. I didn't make any complaints. I understand at least one other person did, and law enforcement did nothing about it. So music is an issue as long as that's a condition. The other issue is parking. According to code, there's enough parking, but there really isn't enough parking because they use parking at the Cincinnati Hills Christian Academy parking lot. So if they have enough space on their own property, why are they using property across the street where their employees have to walk across Snyder Road to get to work because their employees park at Cincinnati Hills? I don't know if this board can do anything about that unless there's a condition that they've got to use the parking that's their property and not someone else's property.
They are in compliance with regard to our regulations concerning parking. So we can't stipulate, hey, you need more parking when they're actually within the guidelines. So now you could argue that the guidelines are off, and I get that. But right now, this is what we're.
It just creates a dangerous situation. I've seen it myself on Snyder Road because the employees have to run, they don't go to the corner. They cross in the middle of Snyder, not at a corner. And on occasions, once southbound and once northbound, I've had people running across the street at night. And I'm aware of it. I don't know about other drivers on Snyder, but I see it. It's an issue, and I think the owners should be mindful of that. They are parking there in violation of a court order in Sycamore Township that this township has no jurisdiction over, but that's just a fact. But my concern is parking. I just want to make that clear on the record, and the music is the issue too.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak against the project? Having heard none, we will close the public portion of the hearing at 8:25. So my question is to Brian, I see the, assuming the current architecture will be continued with the addition. And I don't mean to pick on the ownership here, but I think it's nice architecture. But it seemingly, they take advantage of temporary signage at various occasions, for various events. I don't know what our rules and regulations are related to that, but I doubt that any other business would be permitted to do some of those things.
Well, they're not, and neither are most of the others. None of those temporary signs are actually permitted. They're all a violation. The issue with temporary signs is by the time that they're written a notice of violation, they're gone. When we go to court and take a picture of the facade that we wrote the citation on, and there's no sign there anymore, the court's, you know, what are we doing? You can add a condition that says that they're not allowed to have any temporary signs, and every time that a temporary sign goes up, it's a violation of your condition. Should make it a little bit faster for us to get the notice, but it's still, eventually we'd run into the same situation where we'd be in housing court with a temporary sign violation.
So whether or not we do anything, I mean, the condition means nothing really.
Well, it makes it like every time, every single time they do it, and it's a violation. You know, we can dispense with the 21-day notice waiting period and write the citation that day because it violates the condition of your approval. But we can get to that point without it. So it's just more, if you wanted to clarify to the owners that they're not allowed to have those signs, you could make it a condition. We can always point to that when we get to court, but.
That seems a little excessive to not allow them to have any temporary signs because, you know, I don't know.
That condition would go forever with the property too. And I don't know if the Sims Township Code will ever be changed to increase the amount of temporary signs that you're allowed to have, but it's possible.
Yeah, that feels a little too extreme for me. Maybe just a reminder for them to comply with the temporary sign regulations that are already in place?
It's just, you know, we ask businesses to show us your renderings. Show us what you plan to do. When they build a building, we want to see building materials. We want to see colors. And, right? And we approve all that. Again, we do it because we feel it fits within the community, et cetera, et cetera. And then somebody then decides, hey, we got this going on, so I'm going to change, basically change the whole facade and wrap it, if you will. And is that the intent of what we, I mean, why are we even here then? Why are we even approving architecture and that type of thing?
Yeah, I don't know that you are unless you're specifically adding conditions. Like, if they come in and show you a yellow building and then go out and paint it tan, you know, we're not going to tell them they're in violation of the final development plan if they want to paint it 10 years from now or 20 years from now. If they want to reskin it in the existing footprint, we don't.
But if you build it one way per plan, per approved plan, and then you wrap it one day in entirely different coloration, additional signage, basically.
If it's not, unless it's a sign, they're allowed to do that unless you say that they're not. But this is why there aren't any architectural requirements in the zoning resolution. There's not an architectural review body or any kind of overlay or standards for architecture. So, you know, when we're looking at elevations, staff, I mean, not you, but at staff, we're measuring height and, you know, looking for any weird offsets or anything else that doesn't match up with the footprint, but we're not looking at the materials. When someone walks in for a building permit to wrap an existing structure, to, you know, put up new siding on an existing structure, we don't even issue a zoning certificate. We just sign off on it. It goes straight to the building department. Unless you're raising the height of the roof, redoing the roof, you know, redoing the structure, tearing down structural walls, we're not issuing a permit. We're just signing off on it. It's going to the, straight to the building review, similar to indoor. We don't look at indoor renovations either. When you're just doing something that's just inside, that's, we just issue the, I mean, we just sign off on those permits. We don't even issue a zoning certificate. So all the architectural stuff you're talking about, you can. I mean, I don't know. At one point, it was a violation of state law to require, say, brick, you know, specific materials on a building. It was allowed for a short period of time. I believe that it's now currently not allowed again. So your zoning code can't require all buildings in your township to be brick, for example. And so when you get into like colors and stuff like that.
Tell that to about 10 other townships.
And that may be true. I mean, it may be that they've never gotten sued for it. It may be that they won their case and some other place lost theirs. I mean, it's, you know, law has changed. The state legislature changes this a lot.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if that's still applied in like planned districts, or is that just straight zone, the not being able to regulate building materials?
It's in, it's in straight zoning districts for sure. But when you require it as a commission, that's, it's gray. That's why I said it's not like clearly illegal for you to do it. Like, we can't add that to the zoning code. But like I said, unless you have specific conditions, like you want to make the building yellow, and you say that the building shall be yellow as part of your. as part of your motion to approve, then we'll make sure the building's always yellow. You know, we'll always have to check it when it comes in and make sure that it's still going to be yellow, because of that condition. I mean, I don't particularly like those conditions, because 20 years from now it requires somebody to pull this one specific document out of this very large file and recognize that it's required to be yellow, but you do technically have the authority to do that. I mean, and not just that, it's an example, you know.
I get it.
If you're talking about the Mansour Group style, or, you know, any of the other elements that you feel are important, you're, you can, as a commission, include those as conditions.
So where, do we have the, the old resolution concerning the outdoor music? Do we have that language?
I just had it out, and I, I said that that was the only condition, there was one other condition, but it was related to the basement, and I forgot to mention that that, that previous addition had a basement. There was some discussion about, you know, whether they would ever use it for banquet halls, like, we as zoning administrators, we, we see that a lot, people move offices down there, they expand, they have banquets.
But they're not having a basement?
No, so that's why, that's why it didn't stick in my head, but there was a condition that said that they, they're not allowed, that they weren't allowed to utilize the basement for any seating, or public gathering.
Okay.
There were two conditions, that, and the second condition was that there shall not be any outdoor music venues.
Okay. All right.
I have a question for Brian, real quick.
Okay.
With respect to the reciprocal parking agreement that was mentioned with the office condominium...
Yep.
Fifty-two additional spaces, is that a lot?
Ain't it?
There's no restrictions on that?
There are plenty of restrictions on that, that are all part of the court case that approved the condominium, or the office buildings next door, that's all wrapped up in its own lawsuit.
Right.
And codified specifically by all of the attorneys involved in that lawsuit. So yes, that's why I said I've seen that agreement, and it's been reviewed and hammered out by all the attorneys involved.
But they comply with, they currently comply and will continue to comply with our code related to parking with regard to this addition?
Without any of those spaces that are shared with the offices next door, yes.
Can I ask a question to our board, if that's okay? We're talking about outdoor music, and in the, the staff that uses the word loud speakers, are we saying no loud music, or are we saying no speakers at all?
Well, so they don't have, like, a stage that they're showing on the final development plan, but, you know, like, where they would have an outdoor area with speakers, like an outdoor smoking area, patio, or seating area, where they would be, you know, playing music outside, that's what...
But there's no definition of what loud is, you can't...
Well, there's, that's a typical definition of a, of a outdoor speaker, the loud, loud, an outdoor loud speaker.
Does the township have a noise ordinance?
It's an adjective.
We do.
Basically, not an answer.
After 11, but it does not specify decibels.
Yeah.
So this, we would be requesting that there be no outdoor speakers.
Or music, I mean, the way you wrote it last time was outdoor music venues, which I think covers outdoor, like...
You don't even need the word loud, just no speakers outdoors.
Oh, yeah, you could make them, you just say no outdoor music, or speakers, or antiques, you know.
If you say no speakers, it means they can't say, you know, the brown's table is ready, you know, and announce tables, anything, really.
I don't know if they do that now, but yes, that's true, they would not be able to.
But, you know, I'd just as soon say, no outdoor speakers, for music or any other...
Yeah.
...purpose.
That's great. You ready to make a motion?
I've never made a motion before, but I will motion that we accept the approval of the modification to the final development plan for Silver Spring House, the consideration that there will be no outdoor speakers.
Condition.
Condition, yeah.
Condition. With the condition that there will be no outdoor speakers.
Or live music.
Or loud music.
Live music.
Live music.
Outdoors.
Yeah.
Outdoors, yeah.
Outdoor music.
I hope I got the rude wording of that correct.
So what I, what I had was that there shall be no outdoor speakers or live music outdoors.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have to go through, so these, so these other conditions that are detailed, those are already part of the application, right?
Yeah, the, the conditions that are part of the Township Trustees' resolution, yeah, those don't change, and you don't need to mention them at all, they, they will remain on the property, like I said, forever. The only other thing that I would suggest for the motion as possible conditions for you to consider, is for the removal of the right-in, right-out curb cut, potentially with some timing associated with that. You know, that the, the right-in, right-out curb cut shall be removed prior to the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy for the addition?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
I do, too.
The only reason I say that is that we've had issues with not ever getting the driveways removed when they've been shown or planned to be removed. Not that that's what they would do, but...
Do we need to amend the motion to add that?
Just add...
Well, nobody had seconded it yet, I think you can just add it there.
In addition here, Brian, you state that in yours, it's, or this page, the agenda, eliminate and approve cooler addition and storage voting, does that need to be stated, or is that...
So this language was written based on the original request, this, similar to the Snyder Road request, was revised several times before it got to tonight's meeting, so, that language is no longer applicable, the staff report is.
So, Brian, unless there's any other questions, Brian, could you read again to us the motion that's on the table?
I had a motion to approve with two conditions, one, that there shall be no outdoor speakers or live music outdoors, and a second condition, that the right-in, right-out curb cut shall be removed prior to the issuance of the final CO for the addition.
Can I, can I speak for just a moment?
Yes, we've closed the public hearing, but...
Well, it's just about the speakers.
Let me, let me, let me ask you, would the applicant come up and, and answer a question about the speakers? Please state your name and your address.
Joe Smith. Yeah, the, the reason I came up here is the speakers.
Joe, can you please state your name and your address?
Joe, my, my name is Joe Smith, and I'm part owner of the Silver Spring House.
And your address, sir.
Eighty-three, twenty-two East Kemper Road.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. But, you know, the more I thought about it, we had speakers out there when we had the patios, tables, and chairs in the first place, and there were two or three speakers out there. We always kept the music at a certain tone, we never blared it, and I think it's going to lose a lot of the atmosphere for the tables that are going to be out there. And as long as we can control the speakers and not play the music that loud, which we really don't, I don't know how Mr. Goldberg and his wife can hear that when they're halfway down the neighborhood.
Well, can I just respond to that? I live on Meadow Bluff Court, and I can hear the music from my house.
Where do you live?
Meadow Bluff Court.
Where, where's that located?
Uh, that is in Kemper Woods subdivision, and I have been able to hear the music at times, even as far as my house. And I can hear speakers at CHC from my house as well.
Okay, well, I don't know if you're hearing our music or not, but we don't play it that loud. So I just think you would lose part of the ambiance and atmosphere if we can't play music to six or seven tables that are out there.
So Joe, let me ask you a question, are these speakers inside, or are they outside?
No, they would be outside, I mean, just like we had them before. I mean, there, there's like two or three, I'm about this big, if that. I think I can take a picture, I can hand somebody...
So is seating inside, or is your, do you have out, you're still going to have outside seating?
Yeah, there'll be five or six tables, right? Is this the...
Yeah, you're on the right page.
Yeah, and, and the street, Petrilla, is right behind it. There's a whole group of homes right behind that outdoor seating area.
You said the speakers would be out there, are they not currently out there?
No, 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 they were out there, uh, let's see, in 2014. They were there in 2014, before we did our last addition, which was six years ago, I believe, five or six years ago.
So they're not currently out there?
I'm sorry.
So they're not, they're not currently out there?
No, I don't think they are, I'll have to look.
Okay.
The tent's there right now, so we might have had them out there, I cannot remember, to be honest with you.
Doesn't sound like...
I can take a picture, we might have just put them back up for the tent area, I don't remember. But we had them out there back in 2014, when we had a row of tables along the back of the north side of the building. And it seemed to work out real well, and no one, no neighbors came up to us at that time and complained about the music. I can't think of anybody on Petrilla that did, but if you notice these tables, I just think you lose part of, it's not like it's going to be glaring. You guys, I think, I don't know if all of you guys have been in there, but we don't run that kind of operation, so we're...
I don't think what we're talking about is disparaging your operations, Joe. What I, what I am seeing, though, is you've gone eight years without the outdoor speakers, and now you're saying that's...
Well, we're going to have outdoor tables.
But you currently do, do you not?
No, we don't, I mean, we have, they're covered by the tent right now.
You have, you have them in the front, don't you?
Right, in the front.
Okay.
And in the back, we had them back in, whatever, 2014 or 2015, so...
Isn't the restriction, Brian, be based on decibel levels, or is that getting too, into the weeds?
Who's, who's...
I'm just, but that was back to the loud speaker comment. I, I'm just trying to, there has to be a happy medium, is what you're asking for, correct?
Yes, sir.
And there's a concern of too loud, and there's ways to restrict that, but I'm not sure what we're able to do on that. Brian?
I mean, you can, you can put a maximum decibel level on there, our zoning inspector can be out there with an app on her iPhone, but she's, she doesn't work on weekends or at night, when the problem is going to, is going to come up, so...
It would be playing during the day as well, but I mean, if she wanted to come out, we're not the type of place that...
People are not going to be complaining in the middle of the day, though, they're going to get, we're, you know, they're going to want to call and complain about it at night, which is when the township's gotten the call so far. My point is, the zoning inspector's not going to be available when people call the township at that time at night, asking about it. There is a township noise ordinance that doesn't have a specific decibel level, that's up to the sheriff's office to enforce, I would leave it at that.
Is there a time level? Is there a timeframe, like, no different than we talk about lights having been...
I don't know, like, I, because that's a separate...
It's eleven to seven.
Sorry.
It's eleven to seven. And our cops have gone out there many times, and they didn't feel it was over the top. But you're in the, the middle of a residential neighborhood, and I think the fact that we love Silver Spring House, I mean, we do.
Thank you.
The neighborhood loves your restaurant, but you have to be really, really careful of your neighbors. We are a residential area, I think it's really cool that we have a place like yours in a residential neighborhood, but if you put outdoor speakers out there, I'm afraid it's, it's a really negative thing for the residents. And I'm speaking from experience personally, and I'm also speaking to neighbors that live in Heartland, that live on Petrilla, and that live even on my street. We all have heard music from our homes.
Are the concerns the hours that the music is playing, or...
Yeah, yeah, it, it's the loudness and the hours. It's, it's kind of disruptive, it's disruptive when you're sitting out in your backyard and you can hear music from a restaurant.
I mean, that's an option, too, you can't put a time limit on the use of outdoor speakers.
You cannot.
You can.
Yeah, we could limit it at nine o'clock, or 10 o'clock, or something like that.
And if the speakers are indoors, and all the windows are open, the outdoor seating people are still going to hear it.
But we don't want to turn it up that loud.
No.
You can, you can hear, when you're inside, we try not to keep it up, you got to be able to, you want the background music.
You want to be able to talk.
We don't, we, you want to be able to talk. We don't play the music that loud to where you can't carry on a conversation.
Right.
That's why we try to keep it, you know, at a nice decibel across the whole, inside the whole building.
Right. Well, I think that if people really want to hear the music, they'll sit inside rather than outside, they have a choice.
There's people that like the outdoor seating as well in the summertime.
I know, I know, but we can't have everything we want, all, in our life, all the time.
What's different from our last discussion we had when you came in front of us to now was you were proposing a much larger area, that there was perception that it could have a wedding reception or something like that, where you could have loud noises. Now you've sort of just expanded a little bit what you've done...
Right.
And sort of stayed within what you're, how you're currently operating, and not changing the feel of how, the last time was like, you were going way off of what Silver Spring House is, and you're kind of staying within that character here. Is that fair?
Right, just more of the same, just a little bit more of the same.
And that's not the only spot that you have speakers, I would assume, is that fair?
No, we have them all over, I mean, there's a couple in the front, and throughout the entire building, inside.
Ever hear of loud music on the inside?
Very rarely. We do have it from time to time, but not on a regular basis. We had a lot of it during Pink Ribbon, the Breast Cancer Awareness Month, to raise money for breast cancer awareness. We had that throughout the entire month of October, so we had, like, three or four, three or four bands or players throughout the course of the month. And that's, that's, that's the most we've ever had in a month, so, we probably play it about four or five times a year at the most, live music.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks for your, for listening.
Thank you.
Do you see if the residents have any additional concerns in light of what you said?
No, I've closed the public hearing. So, before us is a motion. That is correct, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And can you read that motion one more time, and we have not seconded it, but I want to read it one more time?
Yes, Commissioner moved that, to approve the request with two conditions, that there shall be no outdoor speakers or live music outdoors, and the second condition, that the right-in, right-out curb cut shall be removed prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the addition.
So that's before us, so is there any additional discussion? Anybody want to talk about amending that, or leaving it as is, and we go to vote?
I'm happy as is.
I'm just struggling with the outdoor speaker part, and restricting them.
Yeah, I kind of am, too. I think the live music outdoors makes more sense, but if they have a few speakers, and have, like, ambient music...
But how are you going to regulate that?
The challenge is, how do you manage it?
How are you going to, what is a few speakers?
You're going to have to second it.
So, my take is, is I think we've just heard from the property owner that they haven't had speakers for eight years. I don't think that's affected their business. I think it's a nice amenity to have the outdoor speakers, but the reality of it is, is we have, he is in the middle of, of a residential area, and there has to be, there's good and bad with that. The good is, he, he does a phenomenal job, and he's rewarded with phenomenal sales volume. The bad is, there's people around him, okay? So the reality of it is, is I don't think that that's, that's going to be that detrimental to his business. I don't think anything can touch his business, frankly, but that's a personal comment. And, and I think we all go there, and I don't think the outdoor speakers is that big an issue.
I agree.
And the flip of it is, is, you know, we do our job in some regards and protect the residents, so that's my take. So at this point, unless we have any other additional amendments to that motion, I'm going to ask for a roll call.
We need some...
We need a second first.
I'll say.
Okay. It's okay if I do a roll call, George?
Yes, please.
Ms. Coughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Adder?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Having heard, heard none, any new business?
We do have a meeting next month, there are text amendments that are coming to you on the agenda.
Text amendments, they've been vetted, the township's going to go to the township trustees. Okay.
What are those?
What was, what was the thing that Jeff was talking about?
It's, I, there was a set of text amendments that went through last year, I think, and we've had a few small text amendments that have gone through in the last year or two, right? This is another one like that.
Okay. Any administrative matters?